Gentlemen.
How are you?
How are you?
I'm good.
Bill, we okay?
Yes.
Yeah, we're all set.
Oh, it's Matt, Matt, I mean Mark. Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, I'm now going to call me Wednesday, March 30th, 2022, meeting of Norfolk County Commissioners into session. This meeting is live and on the Zoom. On Thursday, March 12th, 2020, Governor Charles Baker issued an order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20. That order was effective immediately until it is rescinded or the state of emergency is terminated. Further, on February 12th, 2022, by accident legislature, the order was extended until July 15th, 2022. Welcome, everyone, I'm going to ask you to stand and join us in saluting the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I've called this meeting to order, I'm going to take the role Commissioner Stady.
Present.
Commissioner Collins.
Present.
Commissioner Shea is present, we have a quorum. The first order of business today is a 1:00 PM public hearing on the fiscal 2023 Norfolk County operating budget. I'm going to open that hearing now required by, in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 35, Section 28 of the general laws. They have declared the public hearing on the Norfolk County Budget 2023 Budget be opened. I'm now going to ask for any comment, any public comment at this time. As I said at the outset of the meeting, this meeting is a hybrid meeting, we're on the Zoom and we're live. I don't believe we have anyone in the audience with us today live that has any comments, but it is my intention to call on the county director, John Cronin, who's here with us, to give us his comments on the review of the 2023 budget. Then we're going to take his recommendations, but anyone who has any comment during this period will be accorded, of course, allowed to speak. We're going to not close the public hearing today, we will be continuing at the end of it. So having said all that, I'm going to call on County Director John Cronin for his view of the fiscal 2023 budget. Director Cronin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
The FY23 budget process began in January. Budget development included activities by each of our department heads to produce and submit budgets that adhere to a maintenance of effort. We require that departments justify any requests for increases above that level from FY22. The submission of budgets came in on target in terms of timeline. In the last several weeks, our staff, including Phil Iantosca, our financial consultant, Matt Abrahams, and I have been pulling together all of the relevant revenue and budget requests. Before you today is a reflection of the budgets as requested. The requested budgets against the proposed revenue that I've prepared unfortunately exceed available resources by $933,665. This deficiency is not unexpected as you review budgets that are, excuse me, meeting an expected level of request versus available revenue. I'd like to explain to the commissioners that when preparing the revenue, I prepared so in such a way that it was modest and conservative, as all revenue estimates ought to be. Briefly, the the larger revenue estimates, including the registry transaction fees, were based upon the trial balance of January 31st, 2022. Looking at the collections to date, measured against prior year collections, I increased that particular line by $250,000. Recreational receipts that are baked into this include the new rates that the commissioners approved, I believe, two to three weeks ago when Carl Minor was in. The funding associated with the deeds excise was increased from 4.166 in FY22 to 4.5, again based on the trial balance collections as of January 31st. So overall, our revenues are modest. We do see a drop in our online fees. That account could had a collection of 310,000 projected in FY20, 180,000 in FY21, 360,000 FY22, and I'm adjusting that down to 200,000 in FY23. That particular account, as I mentioned, of the Finance Committee has had a history. I begin, I believe it began in FY07, and it peaked over close to $800,000 around 2013. And unfortunately, it's been going downhill since then. And so that particular item is an area that I believe merits some closer valuation, given where it has been and what we projected to be.
What chance did I get?
Sorry. It's known as the Computer Access Fund Commissioner Stady, also known as online fees.
Copy fees.
Okay.
Okay.
Finally, the county is required, I understand by the Treasurer, to incorporate some amount of money from prior year surplus, in this case, I'm budgeting $500,000 from that to total our projected revenues and overall revenue collections to be approximately $33,083,788. Last week, when we met with the Finance Committee, we took the opportunity to explain to them these details, and then furthermore go through the budgets once more. As each of you know, the Finance Committee attended your meetings over the last month and had a firsthand knowledge of what each department was looking for in FY23. So I prepared for your benefit and for theirs, a brief summary of their budget submissions. I'll go through them briefly at this time. In our miscellaneous budget category, our healthcare costs grew by 3% from FY22. That's an increase of $244,635. Excuse me. Our county retirement contribution is increasing by $195,774. And our workers' comp insurance is increasing by $87,000. I'll get back to that in just a minute. This budget also includes a salary reserve of $225,000 in anticipation of the impact for cost of living increases from our upcoming collective bargaining discussions with the X-Me unit. The Walson budget, they had to increase their temporary salaries budget by 10,000 to keep pace with the minimum wage. And they did propose land improvements of $80,000, a seed defense repair of $15,000, and area benches near the playground of $9,000. I wish to inform you today that the $15,000 cedar fence and the $9,000 benches have been removed from the request and placed before you under the FY22 third supplemental. So it's part of our supplemental request, those two items. In the Commissioner's budget, as you know, the Veteran Service Officer Program has morphed from a salaried service program into a contract service. We now provide veteran service support for Avon and Holberg. So we saw a drop of two FTEs in the corresponding salaries. We made a correction to professional staff associated with classification studies, and we are also adding one new FTE, an HR specialist, per the Abrahams Group recommendation. In technology, due to the Ripples Group conducting their business right now and expecting the recommendation to you in late April, we maintain the status quo. We'll revisit that in late April, once we hear from the Ripples Group. The Treasurer's Office requested additional legal services to their base of $10,000. They are decreasing their temp salaries by 5,000 and overall submitted a zero base budget. Facilities, so by and large, their manpower stays the same. However, I've had conversations with John McGowan over the last year about having staff associated with facilities undergo off-site OSHA training. Members of our engineering department, I believe, have taken certain OSHA training in the past. And in my experience, it's a great tool to help existing employees understand the safe benefits and safe methods by which they can conduct their business. In this case, we are going to be facing a $10,000 increase in overtime to cover the shifts, while some go to the off-site training, and an additional $14,000 for the training associated with the cost. Our workers' comp costs have obviously been a part of our budget. They aren't increasing because we've had additional claims. We had a claim this past year, which involved one of our workers coming in contact with a hypothermic needle on site. The circumstances they conduct their business in sometimes overlooked. Custodians do a great job in our facilities, but yet I think having a closer examination of how they conduct their business so that we can help them understand the safest way to do that is something worth the investment. Incidentally, the facilities are carrying four individuals, of which the county has appointed as temporary staff associated with custodians positions. They are being shown as temp salaries now and vacant slots. All these positions will be subject to bidding rights once and if they become, excuse me, permanent employees. Finally, facilities is projecting some modest increases in utilities for natural gas and gasoline as the costs of each have gone up. Engineering provided basically a maintenance budget. They're utilizing services that were fortified in FY22 by adding a new survey. And that cost in FY23 will be approximately $14,000 because they're taking the net savings of the position that was funded in FY22. This builds on remarks by the Abrahams Group of increasing demand for services. As the commissioners understand, engineering is a professional field that many of our constituent communities feel strong value for. Under Patrick Higgins, we've been receiving more and more requests. Incidentally, Patrick will be on our call today to answer any questions about an upcoming request that has come in. So there's a net add of one FTE there. The Norfolk County Agricultural School has overhauled their revenue model, utilizing the results of a recent consultant survey. The agricultural school is looking for a new tuition model that generates revenue to create a reserve of over $350,000. The tuition model now includes funding the debt service associated with the agricultural school. That cost is a flat fee assigned to both in-county and out-of-county students. The commission should be aware that the county contribution towards the agricultural school remains the same as in past years, with a 2.5% increase. The Registry of Deeds presented a budget that included requested four new positions. The Register explained during his presentation that three of them were positions that he was looking to create to improve promotional opportunities of staff. The mandated budget request that was submitted increased from FY22 by over $350,000. Revenue, as I mentioned, we are projecting revenue against primarily the January 2022 trial balance and historical collection trends. The indirect cost calculations were, I prepared those last month, and I share them both with the agricultural school and the registry for inclusion in the budget submissions. There's a note there, of course, about the online fees. For the commissioners' benefit and those listening, the view ahead. Over the next week, I plan to collaborate with the Finance Committee and the Advisory Board on closing this deficiency. I'll prepare a draft balanced budget by April 6th for the Finance Committee's consideration. Receiving any input from that meeting, I will refine the budget, the balanced budget, excuse me, for presentation to the Advisory Board two weeks from today on April 13th. The Norfolk County Commissioners and Advisory Board will be encouraged to keep their respective public hearings open until May 4th, and May 4th, May 11th, respectively, to allow for any impact from the Ripples Group Technology Assessment, which I mentioned earlier, is due in late April. Our goal, by the way, I want to give some credit to my Assistant Director, Bill Bockley. He has identified a relatively inexpensive software that we've purchased that will, when we're done, give a flip book view to the budget for any readers. They won't have to tolerate paging through it. You can simply use a click button to look at it as though it was in book form. The presentation and the format likely remain the same this fiscal year, but it's a good foundation to build on, as Mark Abraham said, to produce a budget that is transparent, easily read and understood by those readers. I believe the format that Bill found is used in one of our communities, Foxborough, although they add a lot more content, pictures and elements that are probably best thought to be in our future. But nevertheless, I do think it'll be an improvement on the presentation of the budget. That concludes my presentation, the public hearing to the commissioners on the FY23 budget, and I'm happy to answer any questions on that.
Commissioners, any questions?
A couple of quick ones.
Sure.
If I hear.
Commissioner Stady.
So just in some, you noted the fact that it's a deficit budget at present. We know we can't have that, but it looked to me, and correct if I'm wrong, that item A is significant, and the registry's item I make up over a million dollars of increases or things to be offset. Am I right on that, or less?
In a macro sense, I would agree with it, yep.
Okay, okay. And of course, we have the gain on the county Aggie School, and a few other things are kind of a wash. So overall, you feel confident we can handle the things we need to do over the next couple of weeks?
I've begun doing some modeling of how to close the gap. It's achievable. You know, Commissioner, we spoke earlier about the nature of county finance, and I think listeners should understand that although the county is enjoying a relatively robust period of time when revenues are coming in associated with the registry's activities, those revenues are cyclical. I think we all understand they reflect a vibrant economy and a vibrant time, and interest rates were favorable. Due to the pandemic, the buying and selling of homes was active, renovations of homes were active, and that generates a lot of that real estate activity. That's not sustainable. So while we will likely exceed our revenue estimates in FY22 and likely FY23, the gap between the actual collections and what we're projecting conservatively becomes the surplus. The surplus is something that you'll hear about later on when we get into the supplemental, is used to fund our capital budget and other one-time expenses. And it keeps us from enduring any kind of impact from a drop in massive revenue that could negatively affect our operations should we desire to increase revenue associated with those peaks.
See, that clarifies the question I had earlier when speaking by phone. So we use that surplus we have to attend to capitals, which then can take care of other things, so level the playing field.
Yeah, certainly more discretionary type of things rather than fixed operation.
All right, now, not just, last question, Mr. Chairman, if I may. In terms of your approach to looking at those trends, okay? And with all due respect, did you consult like the Register and Joe Doria and others to come up with your thing, or was it just based on, like, remember at the last meeting, not the one, the week before last, I had said, can we get a snapshot of how we're doing in the trial balance in terms of projecting out? So did you, how was your methodology? I saw.
So the registry produced their own revenue estimates, it's within their budget submission.
Right.
And they're conservative as well.
Okay.
But I did have multiple discussions with Joe Doria about revenue modeling, as well as former Director Mike Mullen, who I had a conversation with to understand sort of the pulse and the beat of these revenues. So I do have a sense of how they are coming in and what they're trending to be in FY23. I don't expect the ceiling to fall in in FY23. I do expect some modest decrease, but nothing that would bring us close to our budget projection. In other words, I'm projecting a revenue estimate, which I believe will easily be achieved, and then some.
Okay.
Based on the conversations and input.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
As I said earlier, we have our intention today to continue this public, this public hearing until April 13th.
We're going to continue our meeting until May 4th.
May 4th, for us, okay. But I'm going to ask if anyone has any other comments now, while we're here in session. I might add that we have a budget hat on, but with us today is John Wallace, who's our business manager at our agriculture school. He's a frequent flyer and at all of our meetings, so John has brought forth his first budget, but so far so good, and we're all working together here. So it's a live and breathing document as we talk, subject to change. But we're getting into the last part of our budget calendar, and we're so far sticking to it, so that's a good thing. And I don't believe unless the commissioners have anything else, I'm ready for a motion to continue this public hearing till May 4th, 2020.
What's the date we'll continue, just to the next meeting?
May 20.
May 4th. May 4th, okay. I move, Mr. Chairman, that we continue the public hearing, open this afternoon, to the date of May 4th.
Second. May I make a recommendation?
Sure.
I think you had an intention to receive any questions that may be from the Zoom call associated with the budget before you move to continue the meeting.
Okay, anyone on the Zoom call has a comment on this budget? I'm sorry, I thought I understood that, but anyone at all has any comment? Okay, motion made, seconded to continue this public hearing on the fiscal 23 Norfolk County Budget till May 4th, all in favor?
All right.
We will continue the public hearing. Thank you. Back to the regular agenda. Item number four, minutes of the open session meeting of March 23rd for approval.
I move approval of the meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion made, seconded to accept and approve the open session minutes of the March 23rd meeting. All in favor?
All right.
Thank you, it is a vote. Number five, public comment on this listed meeting today on our March 30th meeting. Any public comment at all? Director Cronin, has anyone reached out to you?
No, sir.
Okay, no public comment at this time. Number six, appointments, we have none. Number seven, old business, we have none. Number eight, previous matters for consideration.
The personnel matters. Push on that.
I'm sorry, personnel matters, that's what I meant. Personnel matters. I think we have two.
We do?
Are they in the matter? I think they're both family leave. We just want to approve them without naming the folks.
Yes.
Is that what they are?
That's exactly right.
Yep. There's no names here.
They're on the papers. Yeah, but we don't want to mention the names for families.
Because it's family leave, but their two family leaves are going to approve, if you choose.
Yes, okay, look at it before. So we're motion to be in order. Requested family leave for individuals.
For the two.
To individuals. Question. That's sufficient.
Sure, I'll second that motion.
Okay, once the two personnel matters today on our agenda, two family leaves of regular full-time personnel. I believe one vote will take care of both of them. A motion made, seconded, all in favor? Granting the family leave. Aye, it is unanimous. Number nine, payroll expense warrants for approval.
If we still decide. Hey, we'll talk about that. The signs?
I think so, yeah.
Okay. All right. Warrant, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Okay. I'll move the following, 22-39 payroll to county in the amount of $134,807.22. So moved. For the warrant. Peter.
Sure. Second, all in favor?
All right.
That's first, go.
Second, we're pleased to this one, 22-39 to the town of Dedham, ARPA funds in the amount of $632,039.50. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And further, we'll be discussing the next.
We're going to discuss the town of Dedham next, number 10.
But you'll get it.
But we're paying them early, all right, go ahead.
All right, and the last one, Mr. Chairman, of 03-0522, expenses to county, $86,114.20, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Thank you.
Speaking of which, there it is.
Number 10.
Just like that.
Great segue. Great segue.
ARPA warrant for approval of town of Dedham. I'm going to ask Director Cronin to outline this ARPA warrant, which is probably our 10th.
We hit 10 then? I, yeah, it's approximately that, yep.
Okay.
Five, we're close to $6 million.
Introduce, Mr. Chairman, and then we'll go through. Go ahead.
Hi. So, good afternoon, commissioners. I'm pleased to present the latest ARPA warrant after town of Dedham, the request totally $632,039.50 would be to replace existing trash containers for all residents. This falls under the Supporting Public Health Initiative. With us is Mr. John and Ed from Dedham, I believe, Finance Director.
Correct.
John and I have had several discussions over the last several months. He's sharp and on the point, he knows what he's doing over there, and I'll turn it over to him if you'd listen.
Any comments, John, and welcome.
He had some color to the replication.
Sure. Well, gentlemen, first time here, so thank you for having me. Very briefly, as we all know, the ARPA funds are used for extraordinary health circumstances that were related to COVID and things that are related to unforeseen or revenue downfall. So with that, these are really attributed to public health. We all know that, or I believe it, actually, I'm not sure, but it was public health. So many different pieces and so many things going on that, as we all aware, that as people stayed home, there was an extreme influx of trash and recycling and overflows that were harmful. So this is where the application really truly came from. The amount of funds we did not have available at the time, so that's why we applied using the ARPA funds for the public health emergency.
In furtherance to this particular application, John's been pretty active. We've had conversations over the last several months regarding other requests that might be coming. I know you and I were very involved with the revenue loss impact that has touched on many of the communities in Norfolk County, and I'll give the commissioners an update on that in just a moment. I know Dedham was hit by a revenue loss, and you were prepared to submit a calculated revenue loss benefit, but due to the final rule impact that didn't materialize. So Dedham, like many other communities, awaiting any assistance, clarification or guidance from the Treasury. And I'll give you that update in a minute, but following this particular application, I expect further applications from Dedham.
Correct.
If you want to give us an idea of what might be in the queue.
We have currently two others in the queue right now, some other public health-related matters relating to communications and things of that nature. Obviously, the final rule, which came out in January, which had sort of an impact on the revenue replacements, which I'll touch base in a second, but some of the coding and making sure that my chart of accounts are correct as we, because we will have to report on these. So pending those little minor pieces, you should have another application for public health. There was one in particular, which is a topic of discussion among many finance directors, is the use of revenue replacement. The revenue replacement calculation, we will be submitting. Originally, we were going to do it as a full-on request to draw down and to distribute the funds and then report out as necessary. Going through the review process, what we have decided then is to take all the actual invoices year-to-date that are perfectly, completely expended, that are revenue replacement eligible, and apply for that. As of right now, it is sitting at the town manager's hands. And once that should happen, it should flow through the process really easily. Every single invoice is ready for review and for be subject to review.
Any idea how much that is?
As of right now, I want to say that total dollar amount is $234,000 of the 500, and I want to say $9,000 available through Norfolk County. There will be another $130,000, I want to say, in that magnitude for the residual piece as we go through the rest of this fiscal year.
You are also going to complement that with your NEU money, too.
That is correct, so we are not, thank you so much for bringing that up. The NEU money, there's also that direct funding from the Treasury. There's revenue replacement also used for upcoming fiscal years, as well as administrative costs as well. So the administrative costs for, as an example, administration of the grant is allowable under ARPA funding. Originally looking towards Norfolk for that, but I understand that we could use the NEU money. So revenue replacement will be also used through that fund.
That's great.
Yep.
Very good.
John's great to work with, actually. No complaints.
Do you know my buddy from Kent, Randy?
I do not. I have been a finance director in another state, and I worked at the federal level prior to this. So I'm still learning all the people.
Yeah. Well, great to have you here.
Welcome.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions?
Dedham's a great hands, it's great work with John, so thanks for coming in.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we need one more. One more motion, and we'll go to the officially.
Do we a check or a wire?
Checks him out. You can walk over and get it, but yeah, Mike can get it by the time you get back.
That's right.
Nice to meet you. Bye, John. Hope to do work. Take care. So you've already approved this under the warrant, but if you'd like to make a ceremonial vote to approve the ARPA.
True, one more, we have been, so let's be consistent.
All right, and so that would be on the agenda. So, Mr. Chairman, I'll move, I've got a total right here, I think it's 632039. All right, I'll move the the amount of $632,039.50 be authorized to be granted to the town of Dedham under the provisions of the American Rescue Plan of Action, ARPA, and may be effective this date.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote, congratulations. I'm going to skip number 11, if there's no objection, go right to 12, because it's number 12, it is 1:30. We have three, we have three bid openings today. We're going to welcome our first in the department, Nancy Rockwell. Hello, Nancy.
Hello, how are you?
Welcome.
Okay, it's 1:30, we have three. The first one is building and roofing repairs as needed for a period of one year with a two-year option to renew. An on-call electrician as, as needed for a period of one year, and the on-call plumber as needed. These are yearly. Nancy, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I'm getting better at this. These are
Three-year bids.
Three-year bids, and every three years we open it up. These are over and above emergency calls, so to speak, that we do.
Yes. And therefore work that, um, our that is above our own plumber or electrician that we have.
Okay, great.
I'm going to go a little out of order.
Any other?
I'm going to read the on-call electrician services as needed. Sanibel, Sanibel Electric Corp. out of Wilmington, Mass.
So what are you doing for your day tomorrow?
Hmm?
What are you doing for your day tomorrow?
Nothing.
Nothing? Well, that's tomorrow.
I know, but we'll do something on Sunday.
Oh.
Yep, it is tomorrow.
Rock, can you find it?
Yeah, John just went to town a little.
We're getting older. Which we don't need.
Yeah.
I have no idea.
It happens sometimes. Keeps it late.
Year one licensed electrician per hour, $135. Electrician's helper, $70. Year two licensed electrician, $135. Electrician's helper, $70. Slow down. Okay. Year one, $135 per hour licensed electrician. Electrician's helper, $70. Year two licensed electrician, $135 per hour. Electrician's helper, $70. Year three licensed electrician, $140 per hour. Electrician's helper, $75 per hour. Overtime. Year one licensed electrician, $160 per hour. Electrician's helper, 90 per hour. Year two licensed electrician, 160. Electrician's helper, 90. Year three same as year one and two. CDS Contracting Services out of Holbrook. Licensed electrician, year one, $135. Electrician's helper, $95. Year two licensed electrician, $138. Electrician's helper, $98. Year three licensed electrician, $141. Electrician's helper, 101. Overtime. Year one licensed electrician, $178. Electrician's helper, $121. Year two licensed electrician, $182. Electrician's helper, $125. Year three licensed electrician, 186. Electrician's helper, 129. Have Gone Green Electric out of Rockland. Mass. Year one licensed electrician, 110 per hour. Electrician's helper, 75 per hour. Year two licensed electrician, 120 per hour. Electrician's helper, 85. Year three licensed electrician, 130 per hour. Electrician's helper, 95. Overtime licensed electrician, 145 per hour. Electrician's helper, 110. Year two licensed electrician, 155. Electrician's helper, 120. Year three licensed electrician, 165. Electrician's helper, 130. Next, we have the on-call plumber as needed. Just ahead, Irvine and Sons out of Lynn, Mass. They have bid for labor during normal working hours, licensed plumber, 161 per hour. Plumber's assistant, $60 per hour. Year two um, licensed plumber, 163 per hour. Apprentice, 62 per hour. Year three licensed elec- sorry, licensed plumber, 165. Apprentice plumber, 64 per hour. Overtime licensed plumber, 209 per hour. Plumber's assistant, 78 per hour. No discount on parts. Next, I have DNF Plumbing and Heating out of Dedham.
Who's that, DNFs?
DNF.
DNF. Thank you.
A licensed plumber during normal working hours, 120 per hour. Plumber's assistant, $80 per hour. Year two licensed plumber, 122. Plumber's assistant, 82. Year three, 124 licensed plumber. 84 plumber's assistant. Overtime licensed plumber, 180 per hour. Plumber's assistant, 120 per hour. Year two licensed plumber, 183. Overtime plumber's assistant, $123. Year three, $184 overtime. Plumber's assistant, 126 overtime. No discount on parts. Patrick J. Candy and Sons out of Boston. Massachusetts. Um, labor during regular work hours, $150 per hour. Plumber's assistant, $70 per hour. No change here, two or three. Emergency repair work, 225 for our licensed plumber. Plumber's assistant, $105 per hour. No discount on parts. That completes the on-call plumber.
Thank you.
God bless. And on-call roofing services as needed. First, we have Aqua Barrier's out of Norfolk, Mass. Late for Monday through Friday. Regular working hours, $120 per hour per man. Emergency repair work, evening or weekend, $180 per hour per man. No discount on parts. Excuse me. Snow shoveling of roofs $115 per hour per man. Second year regular rate, $124 per hour per man. Overtime, 186 per hour. Snow shoveling, $115 an hour per man. Third year, normal rate, 127 per man. Overtime, 190, 50 per man. Snow shoveling, $118 an hour per man. Snow shovels are what we needed if we have an excessive storm.
Please, no more of that.
Haven't had to use them since 2015.
Sounds good.
Next, I have Corolla Contracting out of Winthrop, Mass. Um, late for Monday through Friday, $116 per hour. Emergency repair work, $174 per hour. No discount on parts. Snow shoveling roofs, $108 per hour. Emergency $162 per hour. Year two $118 per hour, $176 per hour overtime. Snow shoveling, $110 per hour. $164 overtime. Year three, $120 per hour. $178 per hour overtime. Shoveling of snow, $112 per hour. $166 overtime. John F. Shea out of Avon, Mass. Um, hourly rate, $120 per hour. Emergency repair work evening or weekend, $153 per hour. No discount on parts. Snow shoveling, $150 per hour. Overtime, $180 per hour. Year two, regular hourly rate, $123. Overtime, 157.50. Snow shoveling, $154. Overtime, 193. Year three regular rate, $126 per hour. Overtime, 162. Snow shoveling roofs, $158 per hour. Overtime, 199. Gibson Roofs out of Pianova, Mass. Labor during normal hours, $125 per hour. Overtime, $199 per hour. No discount on pots. Snow shoveling of roofs, $125 per hour. Emergency, $199 per hour. Second year regular rate, $130 per hour. Overtime, $204 per hour. Snow shoveling, $130 per hour. Overtime, $204 per hour. Third year roofing, regular rate, $135 per hour. Overtime, 209 per hour. Snow shoveling, third year, regular rate, $135 per hour. Overtime, 209 per hour. Lastly, we have Greenwood Industries out of Worcester, Mass. They have bid, um, regular hour, 123 per hour. Overtime, 196 per hour. No discount on pots. Snow shoveling, regular hours, 123. Overtime, $196. Year two, regular rate, 127 per hour. Overtime, 205. Year three $132 per hour regular. 215 overtime. And I kept the snow shoveling the same for years two and three. We're finished.
Okay, uh, any questions, comments, before we ask for a motion to take it under advisement? I have two questions, but any other question? Okay, Nancy, does this include the school, too, when emergency deal?
No, they have, um, the roofing does.
The roofing does?
They have a separate contract for
Okay, that's fine. And how much should we, I mean, not, not money-wise, but how often do we use these people here?
The, the electric and plumbing, um, for work that our own in-house can off
Right.
do, which is, there's not an awful lot of it. Roofing, we use for all our roofing needs, which is quite
Obviously.
optimal for the
We don't have a roofer on them.
No, we don't have roofer on payroll.
Okay. Okay, I think a motion's in order to take this under advisement for a week or two.
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 Was that a quick question?
Sure.
Is that, look at a lot of applicants. Is that unusual? Or is that consistent?
What was done this time is it was increased to up to $50,000 per job. Um, so I think that drew more.
Yeah. Lot of interest, right?
Yes.
What was increased, Nancy?
Yeah.
The project, it's up to, normally it's like under 10, but it's up to $50,000 per job.
And that's the state
Yeah.
rule. Okay.
Yes, that, that's a lot.
But we've had, we have a history of, we've had people over the years, right?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, great.
Quite. Especially roofing.
Okay.
I, I'd move we take the, uh, applications and the information on the bid under advisement for two weeks. For delays for two weeks?
I won't be here next week.
Okay.
That's fine.
Vacation this time.
All right, but you said two weeks, right?
Yes.
Right, okay. All right.
Thinking of Motion the second made and seconded to continue, uh, take under advisement to approve the following bits, uh, roofing repairs, electrician as needed and plumber as needed, all as needed, we vote for two weeks. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We're back to number 11, which is the fiscal year '22 third supplemental appropriation request. Director Cronin.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Um, commissioners, the FY '22 budget is entering its home stretch. Um, as we approach April, um, the, the last quarter of FY '22, there are several items within our operations that could use some one-time spending via surplus funding. Um, I'd like to draw your attention to the summary sheet that I provided to you that complements the form that you would be asked to sign by throw. And task of this form briefly shows a summary of what brought us to this point. Um, as the commissioners may know, earlier this fiscal year, we conducted our first supplemental um, exercise when we recognized an FY '21 surplus that had evolved, evolved, and using that surplus, we split it into multiple sections. Um, some went to OPEB, some went to stabilization, and we set aside a million dollars at that time for one-time expenses associated with capital, um, and county operations, as well as potential at the time, debt relief associated with the, uh, school borrowing. Uh, we did not engage, um, on debt relief and school borrowing. It was determined that the, uh, interest rates that were looming for that borrowing, which we did in January, were so favorable, it would be foolish not to take advantage of that, so we did. Um, using the $1 million, uh, we began in December um, uh, spending, um, that million dollars towards, uh, eligible capital one-time expenses. This afternoon, we have our third supplemental of fiscal year '22, and it totals, and, um, and it's cost $375,622. In addition to the amount spent, um, back in, uh, December with our second supplemental, we'll have over $200,000 of that $1 million available for surplus roll into next fiscal year. So that's a favorable development. Um, one of the things that looks like you're, well, several of the things I'd like to call your attention to include the requests from the departments uh, for your, uh, favorable, favorable action. Um, we're Um, we were asking for an additional $20,000 in legal costs. Um, earlier this fiscal year, we complemented or added, uh, funds to our uh, legal appropriation to offset projected FY22, um, collective bargaining labor costs with our labor attorney. In this request, we're asking for funds to assist the county with the disposition of Quincy District Court. As commissioners may understand, Quincy District Court, um, is being eyed by the Commonwealth for closure, um, purchase, I should say, to create a large regional justice center. As we, uh, move towards the next phase of determining value, um, to enter into negotiations with the Commonwealth on the sale, we have to obtain a appraisal. I've had multiple conversations with Attorney Scott Lopez about this process. It is dictated by general law, uh, so there will be some legal guidance that he will need to, uh, assist as we move forward in budgeting $20,000 for that. Um, we have several shortages, um, that as a result of unexpected costs, um, have, uh, come before us, including $30,000 for our workers' comp costs, $135,000 for group insurance costs. Uh, those items are budgeted, excuse me, we're not fully budgeted in FY22 due to unforeseen circumstances. Um, the treasurer's office has asked for, uh, furniture, um, for their office. I think if anyone has gone down there, they've recognized they have not had any updated furniture in quite some time. The Assistant Treasurer sent along a request, um, and I believe he's been put, put in contact with the vendor that we have used. Uh, so in addition, uh, to the treasurer's request, we're asking for funding to, uh, provide F and E for that space. $20,000. Um, we have four, $17,000 for the Division of Employment Security for unemployment costs, $14,000 for medical security funds. Um, we have a cost with Revised Incorporated, this is the firm that's working with us to finish our website design. Um, I think it was in January, we met with the designer and we requested in what's called an Intranet. I think I've spoken to the commissioners before that this is a separate but integral piece to our internet. The Intranet is an internal, uh, platform, uh, considered a portal of employee access. Um, so for $5,000, they'll develop this, uh, beneficiary landing spot for, um, employees and, um, individuals associated directly with the county to access, um, for the view of policies, procedures, benefit information, and so forth. Um, it, it is a perfect place to land a lot of that information and keep it, um, in perpetuity. Um, the Denny Municipal, uh, Lot across the street is a light pole that is, uh, tilting, uh, to the right and is well past its expected life, it needs to be replaced. Uh, we're looking at, um, the appraisal cost for the Quincy District Court of $10,000, I mentioned earlier, will be using 20 for Scott Lopez's. This is a cost of a private vendor to perform an appraisal of the property on behalf of Norfolk County. We have, well, for, just under $4,000 so far in unpaid bills that we have to, uh, fund to close FY22. Uh, earlier when we talked about the FY23 budget, I mentioned two items that the Walson Recreational Facility had asked for, and I moved them into this, uh, request, that includes, uh, $15,000 for cedar fencing, um, $9,000 for new benches, and pickleball court renovations. Um, the commissioner, I believe Commissioner Shea received a request from one of the members of that organization, and they're requesting that the existing court be modified to accommodate the use and play of that sport on our, on our courts, and that cost would be $15,522. Um, we're looking for $8,500 for a breakaway sign for the Wal, uh, Walston Golf Course. Um, this would be the piece that faces Route 93. Um, the bathroom renovations, um, I believe this came up in prior discussions, but just to, um, inform the commissioners, there are four bathrooms in 614 High Street, and one was recently renovated, I would say within the last five years. That's the men's room on the commissioner's level. The treasurer's office, as well as the ladies' uh, room on this level have not been updated probably ever. Um, they're well past a useful life, life, and would like to fund those renovations. We're looking to complete the security infrastructure here at 614, uh, for $3100 by installing a release switch and monitor for both, um, the front desk here and the commissioner's office, and also the treasurer's office to allow visitors who don't have Bob Access to access the building, uh, through face res, face, face, can't speak, face recognition. So they'll buzz them in and allow them access. Um, and then finally, we just found out a rather urgent repair, um, is being done at Walston Golf Course. They have a water line, uh, pot of water that goes into, um, the main clubhouse that is leaking. Um, the clubhouse still has water, but we can see some evidence that the line has, uh, been compromised, and that cost is $4,500. So in total, we are looking to appropriate, um, the funds of $375,622 towards these items. Um, in addition to the supplemental, we always have some actions that are beyond appropriation. And in this case, there are requests of transfers. Uh, briefly, um, operationally, the RSCP program is looking to move funds from their gifts account to RSCP operating in the aggregate of $3,003. The Registry of Deeds has asked for a transfer of $50,000, um, from deeds excise to the registry main account group to subgroup 295 for printing and binding services. And then finally, the, uh, agricultural school, um, looking at their remaining FY2 capital plan recognizes that they have um, some needs and some plan updates that, um, yield basically a net zero outcome. They'll lose, they're looking to, um, uh, de-emphasize or, uh, what's the word I'm looking for, um, de-authorize, um, two categories of admin second floor office and underground oil tank that totaled $28,682 previously approved in the FY22 capital plan. They move that authorization to a new item, which is to, uh, remove the underground storage tank at the admin building, same cost. And then the second action is to again de-authorize the main hub software system farmhouse boiler and admin boiler items that were previously approved in the FY22 budget totaling $12,524. Uh, they're looking to take that funding and authorize it as farmhouse, gas line, tank, uh, renovations. $12,524. So again, complementing this piece, there are two forms, one is for operating, one is for capital. Um, upon motion and acceptance, we'd ask, just ask for endorsement by the commissioners. Thank you.
I want to open this up for commissioners, any questions or comments about these items?
Uh, yes, if I could. Mr. Chairman, uh, first one, John, great job, as always. Uh, Denny Municipal Lot Light.
That's my question.
Oh, that's funny. It's like, see, there we go again. Uh, you said 5,000, isn't that, uh, don't the utilities need to provide that? Is that, we're paying for the pole or for the service, what is that, what is that about?
So this is our light pole that casts the light into the municipal light.
Okay.
It should be into the municipal lot behind the church.
Okay.
So it's not a utility-owned pole, it's our pole. And it's, um, rusted and it's leaning to the right. Uh, the access panel on the bottom has been exposed.
Okay.
Um, so we're looking to replace the pole.
It's not a municipal parking lot, it's our parking lot.
That's right.
We don't matter if they packed it.
Okay, okay, so that takes care of that. That was the question I had.
All right.
Uh, that's good. Let's see if we're on the same page again. Uh, the, uh, the one about the bathroom renovation, did we put the, the, was that evaluated by the consultant or anybody in terms of priority? Need to be done or something like, I was just looking at that, is that something that we put a high priority on doing and we?
No, it's, it's, it's human comfort. Um, I, I recognize that the only renovated bathroom in this building was the men's room.
Yep.
We haven't touched the ladies' rooms, and they, I, I did inspect the ones on the first floor. Their original design, they don't offer, uh, uh, proper access. Um, they've been modified over the years, um, they just need to be completely renovated. They're original to the building, so it's, it's, uh, staff safety and comfort.
Okay, thank you. Last one, I suppose, is probably, see if I want the, uh, the, the request from the deeds excise.
Yes, sir.
All right, so that, that, that's listed in here as part of the supplemental action.
It's a transfer, correct.
Transfer.
So you would be, his request, the register's request is to move that funding from deeds excise into printing and binding. And as noted in your packet, that item is associated with, um, an action that was taken earlier this fiscal year. Um, you may recall the registry, um, incurred about $40,000 worth of legal bills.
Right.
And as a result of that, uh, through the Finance Committee Advisory Board, back in October, um, it was determined that the, uh, county had an obligation to pay those invoices despite the manner in which the costs were incurred.
Right.
Um, so the funding came from the registered printing and binding account. We informed the register at the time that the action, uh, would be taken to clear the deficiency, which it did. Um, but also to advise the register not to incur any further deficiencies as a result of that. Uh, this matter, this request appears to backfill the, uh, binding request or bindings, um, account that was used to fill the deficiency back in October.
But the, as far as the actual funding to, let's say, refurbish that account, does that come out of the deeds revenue that the register keeps a certain amount of?
That's correct, his deeds ex, the deeds excise account.
deeds excise account, okay.
That's correct.
So with the motion, I just want to make sure I'm clear on it, is it 365, 622? Is that include the registers?
No, that's 375, 6, uh, 622.
I thought I said 365, could be wrong.
You might have the old version, I'm sorry.
Maybe a different sheet.
We modified.
Oh, you're right, you modified, thank you, thank you. Okay, I didn't see it. So it's the, the count right now?
So the 375, 622 will be for the capital items.
Right, yes, sir.
And then you'll have, um, the transfers for operating and capital right below with a separate, uh.
A few separate ones altogether?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, those are my questions, thank you.
Okay. Okay, any other questions about this? So this is two votes or one?
So it's three votes.
There'll be three votes, I, I did forget to add one more thing. In the FY22 second supplemental, we created a, uh, capital contingency, um, fund because we recognize that although we price out some of these jobs or products, we're chasing some inflationary costs that are sometimes, um, beyond our control. Um, so in the second supplemental, we took approximately 10% of the approved capital items and we put it in a separate fund to cover any unexpected overages with FY22 capital items. So if, for example, we've estimated some costs here, the, the restrooms are a good example, those are estimated costs. We find that we need an additional $2,000, $3,000, $4,000 to make the job full, we'll draw from the contingency, uh, to, to offset that cost. So just want to let you know, we will use that contingency associated with any overages, uh, for these capital items, especially here.
Okay. Any other questions? So we're looking for three votes here?
Yes, sir.
Now procedurally, Mr. Chairman, then, you want three votes today? And then this goes to the advisory board for their, uh, approval? Am I right, or?
That's, it does go to the advisory board, I just don't know.
It will go to the Finance Committee, uh, next week and then the advisory board. Um, I was just alerted by Mr. McDonald, there was another quote for security systems, uh, totaling $11,000. Um, I may, I haven't got it in front of you, so this afternoon's vote will stand the way it is, and if I have to amend what you have today by next week, I'll, I'll just bring it in to clean it up.
Okay.
My apologies, I may have overlooked that request for Mark.
All right, let me start with the first one, if you want, do you want?
Give it a go.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, do you want, I mean, do you want to delay it or tell me?
Yeah, unless there's any other comment.
Just getting off the jet, so I wanted to get caught up here. All right, uh, then, Mr. Chairman, I'll move the first, uh, uh, third supplemental request for fiscal '22, uh, as presented and as discussed in the amount of $375,622. So moved. Is that right?
Motion made, do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll second that, that's the capital, correct?
Right.
That is correct.
The second is on the capital, correct.
So on the capital, right?
All right, motion made and seconded, any further discussion among the commissioners? Okay, on the
The vote?
Capital surplus number of 375, 622, all in favor? Aye, that's three to zero, next.
All right, uh, second, Mr. Chairman.
Transfers.
Yes, sir. Uh, move the transfer of the RSVP program, uh, from the gifts, can you make this a little smaller next time?
You notice I have my glasses off, I'm struggling, sorry.
Can you move it as presented in the amount of $3,003?
That's correct.
And also?
Let's take them one at a time.
Okay, yes, sir, I'll move that, all right, so moved.
Second. Under RSVP program, to move funds from gifts to RSVP for 22 operating, it's $3,003, all in favor?
Aye.
That's three to zero, thank you.
All right, I'll move, uh, the next one from deed, dedicated deeds excise to registry account, main group two, subgroup, uh, 295, printing and binding, the amount of $50,000.
I'll second for discussion only.
Okay.
My concern in that, if I may speak?
Go ahead.
Yeah, so I
For discussion.
I know that certainly Director Cronin, and I believe the Finance Committee, I could be wrong, on the advisory board had said, there's statements here that said, you know, you shouldn't draw this down again. And, uh, the registrar was put more or less on notice on that. But my concern still, and I'm always wrestling with this, is I look at it in terms of, again, our money, his money, their money, and it seems that this is a pool of money that he does have that statutory discretion to spend. And, and I feel that this is something that, uh, I know that the, a volume of work they did this year was incredible, in terms of all the closings, all the things that took place. Uh, there certainly is justified in terms of their need for printing and binding. Uh, so it's with mixed feelings, but I move the motion. And I open it for discussion. If the chairman has his question.
All right, on the, on the mo, on the, uh, the matter of the printing and binding, $50,000, we're still in the discussion stage.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I recall every year that we do binding work, I think, in the recent past.
Correct.
Um, I also know that we're in the budget and why we didn't, and we were here probably four weeks ago, we were in the budget discussion, that it wouldn't come up as a normal budget item. Or have we always taken care of it through a supplementary budget? So that's one question I have. And I'm also aware that the, the advisory board and Director Cronin recommend that we not do business this way, so I mean, at this time, I'm probably not going to support this, but I, I still have that question about why it didn't come up during the budget discussion.
Well, I mean, you, to, to, to be fair, I think the discussion that we had the day the register was here was related to the FY23 budget.
This is still in 2022.
This is a 2022 item. His request, uh, which I believe you have copies of, was complimented with a cover letter that made his request a little bit more clear on why he needed it, so he, he provided something, um, beyond just the, the form, uh, requesting funding. So we do have that. And he, he explained it was because of, as Commissioner Stady indicated, um, a, a high level of binding activities that necessitated by uh, high levels of transactions and so forth.
But your reasoning, if I may, it was Nemo, but if they hadn't taken that money down for other expenses, he would have sufficient amount, or would he still been run shy?
Hard to know.
Ban a year, it's incredible year.
It's, it's hard to know, I understand this particular account prior to my arrival, um, was funded at approximately $17,000 below last year, to begin the fiscal year.
Okay.
Um, but then, of course, the events leading up to the supplemental and the overspending for legal costs necessitated the removal of $40,000 from that account to fill that obligation, so that's what led us to this point. I, I disagree with this transfer, I think it's mismanagement by the register and by the registry. They took money out of an account that they knew that they needed, they needed a certain amount for binding, they took it out. Oh, now I need it again? No, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna re- with this mismanagement.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay.
I suppose in a broader sense, it then, for me and for others to understand, is the limitations of what a person can do to move money around, in other words, if you can't.
Chairman?
Yes?
Someone speaking? I heard somebody.
Hello?
Well, um, this is, uh, Bill O'Donnell, how about if I come, I'll be down in, in two minutes then, because I, I tried to talk and it was muted again, so I'll just come down and talk before you take the vote?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Needs to, yeah.
What do you mean, he was muted? All right, um, we're gonna, we're gonna delay based on Reg, Reg O'Donnell's request to come and talk to us on this item.
Right.
And I'm gonna ask us to go to number 13, which is contract awards, because we have none, we have none.
Okay, do you want to move the last item, Mr. Chairman? There was one more thing on there. The, uh, any transfers?
Okay.
Want to clean that up?
All right, all right, I stand corrected, we'll go back, we're back with the third supplemental request. Norfolk County Agricultural High School, transfer out of main hub software system.
Right.
Farmhouse boiler and administration boiler, $12,524, and transfer in new, in new item farmhouse gasoline tank, $12,224, so, cause out of one and into the other. Any questions or comments?
So there's two of them, right? And the, the tank one and the, uh, the software, correct?
They are.
The two separate?
We are, we're repurposing FY22 capital items, so the first one would be to de-authorize the admin second floor office and the underground storage tank, uh, oil tank, and authorize for the same amount of $28,682, the underground tank removed, the admin building. and authorize for the same amount of twenty-eight thousand, six eighty-two, the underground tank removal, the admin building.
Okay. Okay, and then.
Make a motion against that one.
I'll make a motion, yeah, I'll move that we do the, uh, uh, the, the transfer out, the administrative second floor office, underground oil tank, in the amount of twenty-eight thousand, six eighty-two, and for the same amount, transfer it for the underground tank removal at building. Same amount.
All in favor?
Aye.
That is a vote, okay.
The second, is there one more?
Yes, there's one more.
Is there one more, Mr. Chairman? The second would be a move that we authorize to transfer out the main hub software system, farmhouse boiler and ad boiler, in the amount of twelve thousand, five twenty-four, and move it into a new item farmhouse, uh, gasoline tank, in the amount of twelve thousand, five twenty-four. So moved.
Second.
Motion made, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's
Okay, that takes care of it.
That completes that portion of it, we're still on hold for the registry portion.
That's your name.
Number thirteen, contract awards, I have none. Number fourteen, request for engineering services from the town of Norfolk, I think we have a letter that's pretty, pretty self-explanatory here.
Yep.
We can do that if we want, it's addressed to County Director Cronin from Pat Higgins County Surveyor, request from the town of Norfolk for land surveying support services along Lake Street for a street right-of-way and boundary retracement survey needed for the preparation of street right and way acceptance plans. This is dated March twenty-first from the town of Norfolk and our engineer has submitted, uh, his letter, uh, asking for this. Patrick is on the call, if we have any questions, I think it's in auto, we have good history here getting these done. I don't see any questions unless you have any.
No.
I'm ready for both then, you want to ask Pat anything, he's here.
Yeah, um, if I could, Mr. Chairman, for you and Director Cronin, we talked about this before. Number one, Patrick, if you're listening, great job by you and your organization, you're doing a great job and a- again, we continue to serve the towns of Norfolk County and that's what we're about. But if you could, at some point, either provide to Director Cronin or the board, even just a, on a, like a quarterly basis or something, it'd be great to have a shot, snapshot. Okay, like I know we had something in Canton, I know that, now you got Norfolk, you're also doing something at Stoughton, and just a quick little description of where we're at when you can, and if you've done it already, I stand corrected, I apologize. But something, I certainly would support helping out the town of Norfolk and keep up the good work, thank you, sir.
Okay.
All right, so with that, I'll make a move.
Ready to go?
Sure.
Patrick, we're ready to go on the town of Norfolk?
Hey, Bill.
Yes, Commissioner, all, all set.
Okay.
Move the approval from the request of the town of Norfolk, Mass, for surveillance support services along Lake Street, the street right-of-way and boundary retract and survey, uh, in preparation for a street right-of-way and acceptance plans as described by our Director, County Surveyor, uh, Patrick Higgins. Uh, I'll make that a motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. To endorse the request for our Engineering Department to supply engineering services for the town of Norfolk on Lake Street, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Okay, we're back on the supplemental request on the matter of the transfer of fifty thousand dollars from dedicated deeds excise account, main, main group two, subgroup two-nine-five, printing and binding services. We open the discussion as part of a three-part vote, this is one of the votes during the discussion. Director, Reg. O'Donnell came on to the meeting and asked to come down, he is here, so I'm gonna reopen this up and turn it over to Reg. O'Donnell. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I submitted this request on March third and I asked to put it on, uh, March ninth, which was, I heard you mention the budget hearing, Mr. Chair, on the ninth, um, and it wasn't put on on March ninth, and I try to respect the process that you do, I'm not trying to tell you to do it. Is there any reason it wasn't put on March ninth?
Only because we were waiting for all of the others and the Director Cronin and I discussed it, he said we're gonna do them all at once.
Right, and then I, on March sixteenth, I, I believe there was reference that this was a routine request, and suddenly it's not a routine request, and I appreciate.
Who said it was a routine request?
In one of the past meetings when you were talking about it, but let, let me just try to articulate why the registry needs it. First of all, how, I, I, I'm done with, uh, somebody who keeps saying things were done illegally. I wished I didn't have to file a lawsuit, but it was a two-to-one vote and I appreciate Commissioner Stady voted on that nineteen matter.
Go ahead.
And a lawsuit was filed. No, I didn't bring up the legal bills. The registry has a right to pursue and we're doing it not because I want to be filing a suit, you left us with no CIO. So we acted on behalf of the.
And we still don't have one. But why do we go to the CIO?
Well, I know, because, because you make them temporary and the person resigns, but.
Come on, come on.
But, but.
Everything's on the table.
Everything.
That's the article, not mine.
Everything's on the table.
And when we say, where's the CIO, where's, why don't you promote someone, why don't we do something, you say, there you go.
The registry CIO that we had, which I came here December eighth and said, it makes no sense to keep this person temporary because you cannot attract or retain quality people. We need a registry CIO over there, I brought it up December eighth and nothing was done and the person, I, I feel bad, he was a qualified person and I don't blame him for resigning. And that's on, that's not on the registry, I'm trying to make this call.
You know every reason he resigned?
Well, I'll tell you what, I read, at the hearing, I read his resignation letter to you and it made it pretty clear it was because of the temporary designation and things like that, so.
And things like that, okay, but listen, you're going back, we.
Well, the reason I am, Mr. Chair.
I'm not here.
Because you brought up the, County Director brings up the legal matters. We filed suit to get a registry CIO here. There were legal bills incurred, we asked for a transfer, a transfer, not extra money, a transfer in January, I mean, uh, July, as the lawsuit was going, and the new County Director would only have been here June fourteenth, I respected his decision, held it up. And I'm, we did everything we can, as soon as those bills were, uh, given to us in September. So we followed the process as best we can, we got the bills in September and I think everybody in this room knew there was a lawsuit. So for you to bring up the lawsuit, Mr. Director, and to hang up this routine request, it's atrocious. So why is this a routine request? Last year, you know, we have to respect the budget process. We've been short-changed in group two for a number of years. We spent five hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars in fiscal of the year twenty nineteen on a group two. Last year, we requested fifty thousand, very similar in a supplemental request, and it was given. And that's the reason we're requesting it again, it was given last year because it was tremendously busy and I would like to keep it that way. Let us focus on the operation, I don't know why the registry keeps getting penalized because we disagree with the powers-to-be that wanna not keep a registry IT department over there. This request is routine. This request was a fifty thousand dollars last year and it was routinely given, Mr. Chair. You voted for it last year and this year.
Don't tell me what I voted for, I know full well what I voted for. You have selective memory.
Well, well, with all due respect, what I'm trying to say is, as routine as it was last year, and I'm trying to say I appreciate your vote last year, uh, it was routine last year and it's routine this year, as a matter of fact, we were more busy this year. We collected over eighty-two million dollars, we recorded over two hundred fifty, uh, two hundred and five thousand documents and we still put them, we have printing needs, we still put them in books and, and we're behind, uh, uh, you know, we're behind, I mean, we have people that are, are, aren't working there because they have to take vacation and all that other stuff, but we're probably behind getting these books, this is a routine request and I don't like the fact that, I thought I heard you say that, that the County Director is against this request and the Finance Committee was against this request. Well, how did that happen? Because we haven't even been in front of them yet. So, uh, you know, again, I, I submitted this on March third, asked that it be put on March ninth and the request is routine, we made it last year for fifty thousand and it was approved and we need it again this year because of how busy it was. And again, not to bring up, um, you, you, you asked for a letter on spending the deeds excise down, as a matter of fact, I, I, I hope you realize, we were given the date of March twenty-fifth. I did not like the fact that the County Director last Wednesday implied that we didn't respond. He told us to respond by March twenty-fifth and John, I've tried to work with you and do things like that, I did not like the fact that last week, you indicated we didn't respond. You told us to respond by March twenty-fifth, which is Friday, did we respond?
I think you take it out of context, if I may, a, a personal privilege, I, when I, and I was listening from very far away, I was. And I got a tangent about that too, but in defense of Director Cronin, and I spoke to him afterwards, he was just telling us, and I had asked the question, that was my question, I asked that question. And I thought Director Cronin really wasn't signaling you out or anyone and just said, I gave directions that they respond by the twenty-fifth, I took it like that, I didn't read into it like, oh my God, what's.
That wasn't what was said at the meeting, what was said at the meeting is the registry had not responded, so again, I don't want to be.
But you hadn't responded, but you hadn't, Bill.
I, we were told, I, I, the email said to respond by Friday.
Bill, you know as a lawyer, you can take anything out of context, I don't want to get, I'm going as a lawyer with you. The, the, the fact was, I had asked the question. No, I had asked the question, let me finish respectfully, respect the position, you held it once. You did a great job there, I'm trying, okay, and I'm trying. That question had to do with what's left over and Director Cronin informed me, Commissioner Stady, there were four areas. I said, great, and he said, of that matter, several, or maybe he named you, but have not responded, and the date was until the twenty-fifth. That was it, I didn't take it in any kind of negative way at all, I really didn't. I did, I really didn't. But if I want to get, if I want to cut the, can I get to the point, Mr. Chairman, about today?
Absolutely.
Today's discussion, my question, I don't want to get into the lawsuit and, and the law thing, I want to talk about printing and binding. So I'm gonna read what's presented to me as a commissioner. It says here, if I'm on the right item, and I hope I have the right item, five-two-nine-five, is that right?
That's right.
Okay, so in fiscal twenty, it says you expended a hundred twenty-seven thousand, three hundred seventy-eight dollars, I'm just reading from the budget. Fiscal twenty-one, you expended a hundred thirty-seven thousand, increase of ten thousand dollars, all right, so we can see a trend. Fiscal twenty-two was approved, a hundred forty-five thousand. And in fiscal twenty-three, you requested a hundred fifty, okay? To my point, in support of my point, what I was trying to say, in defense of you, is that clearly you need more money because printing and binding is going up and clearly you've been very busy, all, you're working very hard. I, you know, all the closings, everything else going on, so to me, even though there might be another agenda out there, if we will, getting the elephant in the room, I feel your position, and this is justified, because it's probably not funded enough, it wasn't funded enough. I don't want to get into the lawyer and the lawsuit at this time, not this place, I'm trying to compartmentalize, I'm trying to do the what's right at this time and this place. I feel this is justified, that's why I made the motion.
I appreciate it.
And that's all I'm saying, and my colleagues might disagree and I respect that too, that's how we are. But I don't want, we don't need to get into a whole, you know, thing about the lawsuit, and I was not, by any means at all, honestly, thinking less of you for not responding by the twenty-fifth, I didn't. Or our John McGowan, it was just, it was, it was a statement made, that's all, all right?
Well, then respectfully, what questions, Peter or Joe, can I answer to make you realize that this is a routine request? It's needed for registry operations? Uh, we've brought tremendous revenues, not just for the registry, but for the, you know, eleven million dollars was sent over here to the county coffees, uh, in calendar year twenty-one, which ended, uh, December thirty-first. So what, what, what questions can I answer right now to, uh, make you see that this is a routine request and that, you know, it, it, it's really needed for operational reasons, no other reasons than that?
Well, let me say at the outset, you can ask any question you want. There is a history here of voting for everything you ask, but when you come in and talk and use words like "shot changed" for a number of years, no one with one eye that read a registry budget in the last twenty years in my mind would ever say that anybody has been shot changed or that the registry was shot changed, that's number one. Number two, you, you just because the way we did it in the past is not the word, the optimum word anymore and it doesn't seem to have always worked out and balanced out. Some accounts, we hear, you know, you give, you just said, I give eleven million dollars, then when we ask about another account, we, we can't get an answer. So, I mean, this, uh, budget bingo that we play has got to stop. We hire an outside consultant, bid by the general laws, selected in a manner and to say that, uh, after he gives his report, he gets attacked. Uh, my God, uh, you would make it sound like the guy never wrote a, a, a a report on any other municipality or anything else in the world and you actually said, he's never done a county, well, that doesn't mean it wasn't be time to look at counties, I mean, some of the stuff has got to stop. And it has a direct effect on the way everything happens, but to say anyone's being shot changed, public's falling behind and then come in here when we're gonna talk about fifty thousand dollars for planning and the first word out of your mouth is the CIO and everything. It's, it's too contrived for me. This propaganda that the taxpayers are paying and every board in the county got one for fifty-three cents, comes out of your budget, comes out of the taxpayers, then you're asking for more money in printing and they're all or you're on the Conservation Commission in Bellingham, on the Planning Board in Braintree, on the School Building Needs Committee, you get a letter from Reg. O'Donnell with half the story and the poor taxpayers are paying. It sets a bad precedent, it does.
You haven't, you haven't. You haven't liked the fact that the Abrams report, and they might have great things, but with respect to the registry.
You, you attacked it.
They missed the vote, they, Joe, they didn't even come by when they send you an email to not vote the registry CIO. So, you know, I thought the Abrams report was supposed to be a study and it seems like anytime they get criticized, people, certain people seem to take it personally.
I don't take it personally, I don't, I don't know these people, but.
All I'm trying to do is advocate for the registry and the registry users as far as that IT issue and I think we're paying a price because we disagreed with the Abrams report and rightly so. He, before that vote on June thirtieth, he had never been by the registry and he never came by the registry afterwards, Joe. And I know you say it because of the pandemic, our poor people.
I didn't say because of the pandemic.
Well, our, our people, we, the registry has been open and operational every workday since Governor Baker declared an emergency on March tenth, twenty twenty, so it's certainly, uh, Mr. Abrams could have come by. But that's not why they, wha- what I'm saying is, it does seem like that the registry, we have a disagreement. We believe the registry should keep its onsite direct report registry IT department. Uh, you know, that's a separate issue, but I do think.
That's what I'm saying to you, it's separate from this fifty thousand dollars.
I do think it gets tied up in this, so I'm trying to answer a question. It was, last year, take the, this is pre any lawsuit, we had to come here for fifty thousand dollars last year and it's not, it's short-changed, it's, it's, it is not, not the right word, here's the word. In group two, which is part of printing, it's four hundred and one thousand dollars, in fiscal nineteen, we spent five twenty-two. In that whole group, there isn't enough money, now I get it, there's budget requests and, and, and you, you gotta balance things, but last year, we came because the same thing happened. Group two had, I believe, four hundred and one thousand dollars and we had to come and get fifty thousand for printing. It has nothing to do with anything else except that there's a need for printing and it needs, I mean, the books, we still print books? And so what other question, it is routine, I would like to keep it separate from our disagreement on the Abraham study and I, I know you're upset that we, I, I think we put the Abrams through the, the paces. Some of what they recommended was flat out not correct.
We haven't even hardly discussed it.
I would like to separate it from this issue.
The other one?
Well, because I'm, I'm, I'm at the registry trying to do work over there and listen to what's going on and then I hear legal bills.
I, did I, did anyone think you don't, a dozen, I'd say you don't?
Well, that's why I came over and I, 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 because I, I heard legal bills and I heard the County Director was against this request, is that true, County Director?
I don't take a vote on this, Mr. Register, I make recommendations.
You recommended, uh, to be against this.
I have, I have not made my recommendation at this table, I've made my recommendation as Commissioner about the background of the matter, they take the vote.
Yeah, yeah, I think some of the backgrounds are.
Commissioner Stady.
Let me, that's your question, so knowing historically that you are, it seems to be underfunded, you don't have enough to cover printing and binding, right? May I ask politely, respectfully, why on earth did you take from that account, which is low to begin with, to pay the law bill? And I don't want to argue the merits of the law case, you can't, but so why couldn't you take it from somewhere else? If you don't have enough in that account already, what made you take it from that account?
First of all, we made a request for a transfer.
Yeah.
You know, just because there was no registry CIO at the registry, we were left with no choice
Right.
on behalf of the people that use the registry, on behalf of homeowners whose title depends at the registry records. And we filed suit, I know people are unhappy here, but we were left with no choice.
Right.
We requested a transfer.
We have a rebel study now, just looking at that.
We request, we requested a transfer.
Right.
To, to do that.
Right.
Recognizing the legal bills need to get paid. I mean, we have just as much right to an attorney as you people do. I heard you people.
Counselor, answer the question, though. You're always, you're so, you're good, man. You're good. I'm asking politely. Okay, so we understand you have a bill. I have a bill. Okay, when I have a house, I know, well, do I take it from the food? Do I take it from the gas? Do I take it from the clothing, from the kids? I mean, how do I pay my bills? Like, oh, so if I cut the pie up, Andrew still has to eat. All right, you know, I, my kids got to feed them. How come you took this money from the printing and binding? That's all, why?
Why?
I, I know.
We were told to buy the, by the advisory board country, and let me tell you.
You couldn't take it somewhere else. There was no way, there's no legal budget you have.
Well, it only had $7,000 in, that's all it had. I mean, we don't go around suing everybody. So for years, it was funded at $7,000. We make a transfer, the new director, and what was my quote? I go, you like watching a train wreck, don't you? He held up the transfer. And then he says, why don't you make a request for $50,000 for legal? After he held it up. I put the request in for $50,000. It was approved by Commissioner Collins and Commissioner Stady. And then Commissioner Collins, at the advisory board meeting, says, well, I'm against it. Or, you know, you can vote against it. So I don't know if that was a yes vote, and then you change your mind later. So I actually, the registry made a transfer because, and it was, it wasn't, to the law account, it wasn't approved, even though transfers are routinely approved and have been routinely approved when, when a department had requested. Okay, new director, new sheriff, we're going to deal with it. Then he says, why don't you put a request in for legal for $50,000? Okay, that's what I did.
If I look in the budget here, you say the law account for the registry only has $7,000.
Correct.
Exactly.
Yes.
I'm trying to clarify, that's all I'm asking. So you only had $7,000 anyways, you couldn't pay the bill. Okay, and now you got a bill you have to pay. So you somehow, your staff decided to go for printing and binding and make that the.
Well, we went for the transfer the first time.
I'm not right in this, am I getting this wrong?
No, I'll let the best explain. If you'd like my input, I'll.
Okay. So I just didn't understand.
Did the registry approach for a transfer? Okay, well, let me finish.
Let me finish up. So, so the law account is, I guess, not properly funded, all right? Or whatever. You don't have enough.
We, we, we're not in the business of suing people.
So why do we get sued then? Why do you sue?
I wish you did not do that.
Because there's no registry CIO. And, and, and there's an IT department.
I could say off the record, other ways to handle that, but we can't talk about that.
Yeah.
We can't talk anymore because we're in a lawsuit, which is frustrating. Very frustrating way. It's very frustrating. You can't talk about things that should be worked out.
Well, I said it right here. As long as the registry can keep its onsite IT department and keep the registry IT, that lawsuit would have been dropped a long time ago.
We'll see. But, 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 but my point is, you didn't have enough money.
Exactly.
Okay. You took it out of printing and binding, knowing that, 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 didn't have enough to begin with. And now we're in a hole. And I still think, I'll still make my motion.
I appreciate it.
I made my motion.
This is more directed at the other two.
I'm, I, I'm tough. I've been through the mill in different ways. This is all part of the job we have to do. So you can, this, I know this is not personal either. I know, so we're just doing our job.
Put on the facts.
I'm trying to get the facts here. The fact is, you had a busy year. The fact is, you have a lot of books still having to be printed and done. And the fact is, you didn't have enough to begin with anyways in that account. So.
I could just add one thing, that this is a contract that we have with the company, with the vendor. Actually, there's two companies. This is a contract issue now. We want to be able to allow our vendors to work throughout the year. We put a stop on things right now.
Yeah. So I read, what happens if we don't approve this? That won't happen. The books just don't get published till next year? Like, the printing doesn't happen till next year then?
There are a lot of printing issues we have. We have stationary, we have letterhead, we have forms that the public use.
Is that, are those letters that go off part of the printing?
Back to the, the $50,000, one, one thing, Commissioner Stady.
Yes, sir.
So the request was made to transfer. We weren't allowed to. We were asked to make a legal request, which we appreciated both your support. I didn't appreciate that later, that Commissioner Collins said, well, to the finance committee and, and to others, well, it, it's up to you, you don't have to vote this. Okay. So the $50,000 that was approved at this board for legal did not get approved because of statements like that. And we were told at that advisory board meeting, take it out of printing. Take it internally. And then the county director approved, right? You approved the transfer, and the, the legal bills got paid, the transfer went. So I don't know what more you want us to do. We, we, we don't put a lot of money in legal because we, I mean, as a registered Ds, I haven't filed a lawsuit against anybody. I, I feel it's too bad. I, I feel it was warranted, but it's too bad it had to happen. But it's a little, we didn't just go right to the printing. We did go to the printing, we were told not to. Then we asked for 50 grand legal. It got approved at this board, but didn't get effectuated. And we were told then, well, now you can take it out of printing. Take it without, take it within, and, and, you know, you're going to have to come back. So there is a little history, you're right. But last year, we had to do, with no lawsuit, we had to request the 50 grand. So what, what question, I mean, we could fight on the other things till the, the cows go home. And I, I'll stay here and debate with all of you. But it, it doesn't do any terms. What can I say to get this routine request approved? We could fight on the other things. I, I get it. But on this one, it, 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 it's a routine request. It, it shouldn't be part of our fight.
Marguerite, does the $50,000 cover your needs to finish your printing for this fiscal year? Because again, I'm looking at the book. The book showed what you had budgeted, what you requested. So it seemed like you had a normal year, or, which is good, which is good. I'm happy about that, but I'm not too happy about those letters, but you're saying they're not part of it. But, but is that going to be sufficient?
It's a conservative request to finish the year.
And I'll commit, I won't be making any supplemental requests. You know, we made one last year for this, $50,000, and it was approved. And, and it was, it was approved about this time. It was, it was the spring. I, I don't, I don't even believe County Director Cronin was here for that.
Yeah.
So it's, it's a routine request. So again, what, what, what can make this routine, Commissioner Collins?
I don't think it's routine at all. There's a binding account that was probably short, and you shorted it an additional $40,000. Now you want 50, I disagree. I think it's mismanagement on your part and the registry's part.
I, I, well, I, I think it's been mismanagement because the registry seems to get singled out on a lot of things. And in group two, we've routinely come in, and even in this budget, we asked for fiscal 23, $496,000, because we try to point out every year that group two gets given at 401. 401, when in fiscal 19, we spent $522,000 out of group two. That's fiscal 19. So some of this, it's, it's not fiscal mismanagement. We come in here, I, I try to respect the budget process, but not always the monies get in. And that's, that's why we need money in the printing. It didn't get in last year, it hasn't got in a couple of years. So what makes this different than the $50,000 that was approved last year?
Because you shorted it $40,000.
I didn't short it $40,000 at all because of, of a lawsuit. Then how come you told the advisory board not to approve the $50,000 for law? So you can, you can pay the lawyer, what, six figures? And the registry doesn't have a right to a lawyer? So why did you tell the advisory board not to approve the $50,000 that got approved by this board la- last fall?
That was about four questions.
All right, well, how about just answer one?
Well, there was a lawsuit against the county, which you initiated on behalf of the registry. And as part of that lawsuit, you found yourself short of money because you way overspent. The next part is, you came to us and you said, I need money for my legal account. There's a lawsuit against us. As an attorney and as a county commissioner, I didn't want to put the county commissioners in a position where we were gutting your ability to make a lawsuit by not funding that. So that was why I voted for it. And I said to the advisory board, you can choose to fund this or not. I don't believe we, as county commissioners, have the right to not fund your legal budget because we would be undercutting your legal ability. That is why I said it to the advisory board. That's the way I said it to the advisory board. So I voted to put it in.
Before you voted, before you told someone to take it out?
I'm tired of you twisting my words, counsel.
Well, you, you, you know, in essence, you undercutted the registry's ability to litigate by saying, oh, it's unfair for you not to have money to litigate. I'm going to vote for it, but then I'm going to tell all these people, don't vote for it, because.
They always have the right to vote for it or not. It's their job to vote for it or not to vote for it.
And.
I gave my opinion to them.
And once that decision was made, they said, and, and it was said there at the fall, take the money out of the group two accounts.
Wait, wait, wait. My question to you, they told you, take it out of binding? They, yes or no? They told you to take it out of.
Well, they said, take it out of the group, take it out of the monies that are in that budget, and then we'll deal with it.
They told you to take it out of binding?
They, they, the bills had to get paid. And that's why, didn't the county director approve the transfer from printing into legal? So it really comes down to these two issues. This is routine, but the fact that you are trying to limit the registry's ability to litigate, that's.
I, I didn't do that. As a matter of fact, that's the one thing I didn't do. I allowed you to litigate.
Except you told everyone to vote against it, so we didn't have the monies in there.
I didn't tell them to vote against it. I told them how I disagreed with it. They could do what they wanted with it.
Okay. Well, again, the litigation is separate.
The question here, today, is binding. I voted against it because I feel you've mismanaged this account. I'm still going to vote no.
But you, you could vote no. You're voting no because no one dare stands up to the county powers to be, who from the beginning have had an agenda. And the registry had to file a lawsuit because it was unconscionable and such an unsound public policy not to have a registry CIO that has been in existence for over 35 years before I got there. The registry has had an IT department. So if I have to stand up and advocate and people don't like that, it's too bad. Because it should just stay on the issue, the IT issue, but it spills over to all these other issues.
We're into the budget. We're not talking about the IT. When we try to talk about the IT, 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 it goes, it goes to pulp. I mean, the, the, four weeks ago, when, when everything was on the table, it might be under the, I don't see it. Where is it? When the advisory board members ask you, how many resumes do you get? No answer.
Oh, I answered questions on, on the IT process. I answered questions about the vibrant process we had when Mr. Limby said he was going to retire from February of 2021 to June, the vibrant process we had. And then that process got thrown out the window when, on that two to one vote. Thank you, Commissioner Stady. Then we, we move forward, and the only reason we have had even gotten a CIO was because of that lawsuit. And even then, the person had questions. He didn't take the job till August 9th. So from, and I was happy, I, I disagreed with the vote to be temporary, but I was just happy to have some, because you know what? We have cybersecurity concerns. We have ransomware concerns. We collect $82 million. We're getting notices from the IT department of Massachusetts, saying that because of the Ukraine-Russian things, to be on heightened alert because of cybersecurity. So we were thankful we had a, a CIO. And he, he resigned, and it was, I read that at the public hearing on, on March 9th, because it was a temporary position, and he had to do what he had to do for his family, and I don't blame him. Then we're doing the best we can to replace the CIO. I mean, I, 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 I know it's not as important as the pickleballs at, at, at the.
Come on, mouse.
At the golf course.
Come on.
Come on.
I'm reading the agenda as it's given to be. Now you're going to pick on.
Well, I'm just saying.
Come on.
I see you.
That's it. I'm, I'm going to move this question one way. Enough is enough, I'm sorry. I'm way too, too much latitude. I, I don't know if you got an answer either, because the weasel words go ahead of the real words. And I'm, I'm not listening to it anymore.
I, I, I don't do weasel words. I'll just be factual. I'll answer your question, what question? Because I'm, I'm not getting answers the other way. So what's question?
You had a law bill. You had to pay the bill.
Yep.
There wasn't sufficient money. In summary, quickly. With, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. So you took the money from binding, which doesn't make good sense, which almost reinforces politely my colleague's comment. Because if you've got a line item that's underfunded, what would make you take from that? I don't understand. In other words, if you, if there's something statutorily, if you're limited and you say to me, Commissioner Stady, I can't take from this part, this part, and this part, that's all I wanted to know. Why didn't you take it from somewhere else?
You could only take it from group two. Printing is in group two.
Is law in group two?
Law's in. So I can't take it from equipment, and I can't take it from group one salad.
That's the answer I was looking for.
Thank you.
And that's all I wanted.
Because.
That's all I was looking for. So if your hands are tied, and you can only move it within group two, you can only move around in group two, you had to look someplace in there.
Yes.
Now, again, my colleagues, I'm not going to speak for them. They may disagree. I just, my point was, you stuck with group two, you had to pick out group two. I know you had a busy year, and the printing has to be done. The lawsuit, I'm not happy about, no one's happy about, William. The whole case is not making us happy. But in this particular issue, I still make the motion that I feel I want to get this done and get the books printed so that the registry does this job. So that's why I did it, okay? And that's, it may fail, it may pass, at least I got, I wanted to know why. It was group two. Thank you for saying that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Commissioner.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to call for this vote. I don't think any further discussion is going to help. And we've got a remaining four or five items on our agenda that we're going to get to. So we approved the, we approved the first portion, which was the capital surplus. We approved the RSVP program funds, and we approved the fiscal capital plan transfer funds. Under the transfers, the second item is a fifty thousand dollar item from deeds, deeds excise to registry account main group two, subgroup two nine five, printing and binding services. We have a motion made in seconded.
Now you have a motion that was seconded for discussion.
Correct. And we have certainly had discussion. I'm going to call for the vote.
Okay.
I think it's in order, and we'll go from there. On the motion, vote please. To, to allow this transfer or not is the motion. To support it, correct? That was your motion?
Right, that was my motion.
On Commissioner Stady's motion to support it. I'll call for it. Roll call vote. Commissioner Stady.
Aye.
Commissioner Collins?
No.
And the chairman's going to vote no. This motion fails at this time. It will not be included on the third fiscal twenty-two supplementary budget. Thank you. I'm going to take no more discussion.
Thank you.
Item number fifteen, request for the use of the exterior of the Norfolk County Registry Building for filming. We have a request here that was outlined by Assistant Director Buckley at the last meeting. The time clock is running. Did we forward that to the registry after the last?
Yes, we forwarded it on Thursday. The register did not get back to me as of right now. But they would like to come out on Tuesday, look at the site. I know some of the maintenance folks are pretty excited about the food truck they generally bring with them. They forwarded to Nancy a standard contract, which they have used at other sites. We also use this as an opportunity when speaking to the gentleman who's doing site selection to talk about them in the other courthouses we have within our, our sort of stock of buildings for use. They've done work in the Brook Courthouse in downtown Boston. They've used Salem in the past. And so we had a really robust conversation about the Sacco and Benzetti courthouse and the Art Deco courthouse here in Dedham that was built in the forties and the one in Brookline. So they have an interest, and they have worked with us in the past for some other projects. They're also affiliated with the folks from HBO, who did the Julia Child movie a few blocks down and used our back registry parking lot. So they are looking to, for a day, I don't have the exact date in front of me, forgive me.
May fifth.
May fifth. They're looking to rent the back parking lot as other.
I sure will.
Yeah, I don't know. You can take a walk by.
Probably leave Jones.
But they've been.
You have to get in.
I think he's just literally walking out the front door. I don't know if it is him himself, but.
We can't talk about it.
We can't talk about it. However, there was, there's an interest, and Nancy has looked at the standard contract, which is in the parameters of ones we have done before. So we're just asking for your assent for us to move forward with them. They've also importantly, they'll have to do all the things on the town side relative to police details and like. But they have also offered to cover the costs of redirecting the public to the two side doors of our registry building. So it doesn't disrupt the public access.
Do we, like counsel, do we do the location agreement? Is there anything in terms of liability that we're getting into with that?
We had.
I know we've done this before.
Yeah, and Nancy, it is, it is almost identical to ones.
One of your floor?
Well, we have them sign some sort of agreement, but this is to come out and look.
Oh, they would like, they'd like to use it, but they want to film.
Right.
We do have some sort of.
We have, we have something, tactics, right?
Yes, tactics, yeah.
Just in case. Okay, that's all. I think it's ironic, really quick, if I could share a nicer story. Last week, I had some time with my brother and his family, and ironically, at the breakup breakfast, somehow movies came up, and we were talking about the fact that Norfolk County has a significant amount of time been used for different films. And we mentioned that was I Care a Lot. It was that film that was filmed in front. And I know that Potted used a place in Canton, a couple of empty buildings and things like that. So here it is, here we are again, which is kind of fun.
It's big business. There's no question.
Yeah, it's great, which is ironic, so.
We, I think part of that is the tax credit that the state gave for filming. That industry moves.
Yeah.
Chases those type of credits. So that's why Georgia, Minneapolis, Los Angeles, because of those credits there. And when you, when you have that, that allows the incubation of additional production companies and.
Well, didn't one of the winners of the Oscar?
Yeah.
Before the big incident went down?
That's right. Coda.
Coda was in glass glasser. Yeah, so. So I, I'll move that we grant permission for Norfolk County commissioners to allow them, what is the name of a group? Do we have a group here or something?
For the First Kind. I believe it's Finest Kind.
Finest Kind. I'm looking all over.
There we go. There's a memo dated Monday, March twenty-first.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So for Finest, give permission to Finest Kind to move forward to oppose use, a limited use of the property for their purposes, and the date would be on or about May fifth, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two. Fair enough?
Yeah.
Then, then we'll move forward.
Obviously work with the registry.
Yeah, second.
Yeah.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Yeah.
Aye.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Nice job, Bill.
Thank you.
Number sixteen.
Maybe it'll shine fifty thousand.
Fiscal twenty-three budget development.
Thanks, Bill.
Director Cronin.
I'll be very brief, Mr. Commissioner, in the interest of time regarding this item, which is on our agenda every week, your agenda. The budget development is going according to plan. The next step will be the Finest Committee next week. We'll hear balanced, proposed balanced budget. I will receive any input from them, implement changes for the April thirteenth budget hearing with the advisory board. Similar to your task today, I will advise the advisory board chair to open their hearing, but not close it until May eleventh. We're expecting the Ripples Group report in late April, which may or may not have an impact on the budget. So we will allow that window to kind of come and go. You'll convene in May, I believe it's May fourth, to conclude this budget hearing, open today to receive any impacts from the Ripples Group for the FY twenty-three budget. And then, as I mentioned, the following week, according to plan, the advisory board will conclude their FY twenty-three action. So FY twenty-three budget development, as Commissioner Stady, excuse me, Commissioner Shea said earlier, is going quite well. It's going according to plan, and so far, so good. So that is all I have this time.
Okay, now since it, oh, I'm sorry. It's three, Mr. Chairman, sorry. But now it is my turn. And now it is appropriate to ask, did you have any other, I know we've received something from Mr. Adrianal almost, that is issue. Did you hear anything else from anybody else?
No, sir.
Because of the big four?
No, sir.
That we had, that was different from what they already said. I know Mr. McGowan weighed in on that issue. And what was he out there with?
The schools, I think we were looking for some interest in consolidating not just their custodial staff, but also, I believe it was, was it the cafeteria?
Services, right. So John was here. So John didn't weigh in or?
Well, they did. We, we, not recently. They, they made it very clear during the presentation of trustees that they had considered some of the elements associated with the Abrahams Group. And if I, I can't recall the details, I wish John was here. But they mentioned some kind of other modifications to staff assignments and roles. I can't recall the details that they weren't going to reach the recommendations the Abrahams Group had, but they, through the spirit of what was being asked, review the operations of the cafeteria and make staff recommendations. I can't.
I'm pretty clear where John McGowan sits. I think we are. Could, would it be appropriate, Mr. Chairman, if we asked our director to circle back in the schools just to clarify?
Sure.
Because I was hazy. I remember talking about it, but they were one of the first budgets too. And I want to make sure that we're okay on that, you know?
Absolutely. I mean, I, I think all of it is review.
Yeah.
Yep, be happy to talk to John.
I think that was it.
Yep.
And the registry made his point. We got that, you know, one that's running down. So, all right. Thank you. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right.
Number seventeen, report of the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one.
So briefly, there's an item on my director's report, but I'll put it here. With today's award, as you know, we're making progress. We may have another one next week. We'll see how the progress goes on its submission. There was a small item, electronic within the portal where departments, or I should say communities, putting in applications that didn't see any activity, I believe, for thirty days, would go back to draft form. And it created a little bit of a disconnect between some communities who were waiting or working on material to go back into the portal and then see, ooh, damn, I'm at draft again. How did that happen? So Clifton Larson has sent out notice to communities just to let them know, without activity, Microsoft Flow, which is the backend software that runs the portal, who has a, has a hardwired code that says inactivity will result in this, this action. It just means they have to go in and reinitiate the submission, the creator does. That's it. So that, that item is being addressed. A very important development occurred yesterday when the U.S. Treasury, along with myself, Assistant Director Buckley, members of Senator Warren's staff, Senator Markey's staff, as well as Congressman Lynch and Congressman Aquilas, we met with the United States Treasury in response to your, your written appeal on the revenue loss impact for Norfolk County communities. The conversation was timed at thirty minutes. I believe they were planning to speak with several other Norfolk counties about their personal experience with this, this impact. It was clear from the conversation that the staff were presenting themselves as a resource. They wanted to help us. They started to introduce some options that were frankly, things that we'd already addressed, were gone down to try and review. They made it clear that, you know, this was an act of Congress. They cannot override, change, or modify the federal statute. But I think after speaking with Ben Thomas from Senator Markey's office, who I have to give a tremendous amount of credit to, he's been such a resource to work with on behalf of your interests. Ben believes that following this round of communication, we will, we will ping our respective communities to let them know what we've done, and also reach back to the Treasury to see if they can find some kind of interpretive solution that benefits our communities. One of the reasons Bill Buckley is with us, but he wasn't earlier, is because he sat in on the last two calls with the Treasury today. They start at one, and the second one was at one thirty. So a fair amount of activity. I was very happy with the dialogue, very professional, well done. But I, I have to admit to the commissioners, I don't see immediate relief or an immediate solution to this looming problem. But it's important that the communities, as well as you, understand we're doing everything we can through our resources to address it. And there may be further updates when there are. I'll share them with you. Thank you.
Moving right along, report of the county director.
Thank you, Commissioner. We, I've reached out and had a conversation with Lynch Marini to begin the county's FY twenty-one audit cycle. We will be, probably, I told him I'd wait till after our budget season in, in early April gets off the ground. I'll probably circle back and notify the department heads of the engagement letter needs for providing data and FY twenty-one material to the auditor. So more on that later to the department heads. So Stoughton District Court Roof Project, again, I think I mentioned to you that was a seasonal job. And as we approached April, we've engaged Ambiance to understand their timeframe. They provided one. In effect, looking at the preparation of the roof, the installation of the steelwork, the ordering of the steelwork, and then finally, the installation of the two rooftop units. They're looking at early May for the installation of those units. We will update you further on that information. Golf course. Hope I can find this email from Carl. Second. Carl sent along an email today, which should inform you all of activities. Give me a second. Too many papers.
Are they open for business?
They are. They, well, Carl provided a pretty comprehensive email. Here it's right here. Yeah, this is an overall update as they prepare for opening.
It's pretty cold up there.
The stair project, the stair project is completed. This is the stairs going into the clubhouse. The rails were installed on Monday, and the edge of the car path were prepared with lumen seed where the turf was damaged. The golf course architect is working on plans for a walkway to the fifteenth tee. Moran Awning was awarded the bid for the awning replacement. It will be installed the first week of April, sometime next week. The golf course renovation on the sixteenth hole and drainage on the fifth hole is underway and will be substantially completed by May seventh. Additional netting on the twelfth hole is pending on more funding from the third supplemental. And they also want to update us that the software known as G one is now, GolfNow is the cloud-based software. They're waiting for a date of installation and training. There's been no progress with the Pro Shop cabling installation, which was previously approved. So this is their busy season as they get forward, look forward to, I should say, opening up the golf course. And Carl offers that update and wanted to share with you. Tomorrow afternoon, I believe, maybe morning, forgetting. The Ripples Group will conduct their second IT assessment meeting with stakeholders, including the registry, myself and Mark McDonald. They're progressing towards a draft report. As they approach April, they'll be looking for a draft report, possibly by mid-April. Their information and attention to the scope of work is quite impressive. I'm very happy with the progress they're making to date. I wish to inform the commissioners that last week, I met with Michelle McMillian, Michelle Labadini, as well as members of the American Federation of State County Municipal Employees and their respective stewards to set the ground rules. We agreed to the upcoming negotiation ground rules and set the following dates for negotiation, April nineteenth, May sixth, and June tenth. We're hoping by then, we should have clarity on the condition of the expiring contract beginning July first, twenty twenty-two. Commissioners should be aware that, as I previously mentioned, April eighth, which is a weekday Friday, we're scheduled for a multi-county commissioner meeting in Barnstable County. The location has not yet been confirmed. Assistant Director Buckley is pinging our friends down in Barnstable to see if they've found a location. I will share that with you as soon as I learn more. That is all I have for now.
That's, that's next Friday.
Yes.
Great.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Great, that's great. That's great. Flying, man.
Number nineteen, any emergency items that did not reasonably anticipate? I don't have any this week. I don't have any particulars. Thank you for the reminder about April eighth. I think it's overdue, and we're ready to go. Do we have anything else?
On a personal note, I came close, but no cigar. I'm trying to meet a county commissioner from the great state of Florida. I thought it would have been an interesting discussion.
How many counties? Probably have a hundred counties.
Oh, it's amazing. It's a whole different, they call it district.
Yeah.
They don't call it, they call it the district. But the contract I got was actually from, let's say, my sister-in-law's brother, who was visiting from Welsey, who's a town meeting member. I didn't know. I'm like, where were you? Basically, he met this commissioner, gave him a card, and said, she's the commissioner of District One in the area where my brother lives. So it's very interesting. So something to work on, bring back more, more ideas. But I won't charge any travel expense.
I think I'm going to go to Mass Association meeting. But actually, the national, the NACO. The city of the NACO.
We're just talking about that, actually.
Yeah, we're.
Yeah.
I'll go to NACO.
They have, they have different, they have different.
Very exciting.
Places that they meet every year. It's been, it's been virtual for a couple of years.
As I said.
Okay.
I like a good field.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, thanks for all your, that's all I have.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. We have a regular meeting next week, which is April sixth.
Motion, second.
All in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Adjourned at three eleven, three, three oh six. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Something went off. I have to make an announcement.
Uh-oh.